Good afternoon, everyone. The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Donna Savigny, President of the Board of Education, and I would like to welcome you to the July 29, 2020 Board Updates Meeting. I want to thank you for your patience as we were dealing with some technical difficulties over the last several minutes. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on the CCPS website at www.carolkt12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. This will be a hybrid meeting in which some Board members are present in the boardroom. However, some Board members and staff will be participating virtually. Due to the COVID-19 restrictions, the public will not be able to attend the meeting with the exception of those who wish to speak during citizen participation. Citizen participation is scheduled on the agenda for approximately 5:00 p.m. This will now be revised to approximately 6:00 p.m. Speakers will be allowed in the meeting room individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens who wish to speak must adhere to the social distancing guidelines and safety precautions we have previously publicized in communications about public comment for this meeting. The Board of Education will also continue taking public comment related to tonight's agenda items through alternate means. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or U.S. mail. Comments received will be posted on the website. For Board members and staff who are participating in the virtual meeting, I would remind us all to silence our cell phones and other devices around us that the microphones may pick up. Also, we should each silence our microphones when we are not speaking. Now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, let's kick this off. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Bataglia.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyler.
Beat you.
All right, Board members, do we have any comments or adjustments to the agenda for this evening?
I guess make a motion to have the adjustment from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. regarding citizen participation.
Yes, we can just change that in the comment because we were starting a bit late. Okay. Board members, anything else? Okay, then with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor for approval of the agenda as amended, can I get a verbal "aye," please?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, so we will move straight to public participation. And we do want to say ahead of time that we have a large group of folks who have signed up for public participation this evening. We will not be able to take everyone this evening. We're going to limit the number of speakers to the first group of folks that have come in. But we would be very welcome for anyone who doesn't get a chance to speak tonight to submit their comments in writing with the statement that they would like their public comments to be posted publicly. And with that, I will hand it over to Ms. Herbert for the guidelines.
Thank you. To have a quarterly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed in the boardroom individually for the allotted three minutes to address the Board. Citizens who wish to speak must adhere to the social distancing guidelines and safety precautions we have previously publicized in communications about public comment for this meeting. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or U.S. mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question and answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent of the Board reserves the right to correct misinformation presented as factual, after the conclusion of the citizen participation treaty. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority, personnel matter pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled a time on the agenda for citizen participation. Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If the 30 minutes have passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, we have decided tonight to please give us your information and we will post it on our website. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence and exit the boardroom through the designated exit area. And now that has been changed tonight, Dr. Lager, where they enter and exit the same door.
Same way.
Yes. The public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comments in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to remark, to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Our first person tonight is Brendan Gattner.
Hello again. What happens when you're on your cellphone and the signal drops out? You typically curse once, you live with it, and you call the person back. At most, you may call and report your problem to the carrier. But what you probably don't do is tell Verizon, AT&amp;T, or whoever your carrier is how to reposition their satellites or the best location to place a cell tower. Why? Because you're not experts in electromagnetic physics and don't understand how the technology works. And that's a perfect analogy for what we're facing here today. There's a very vocal group of people that are pushing for a reckless and unsafe plan to bring us together in the middle of an ongoing pandemic. Sure, they've watched a couple of YouTube videos, read cherry pick data, or shared some sick memes, but that doesn't make them experts in either education or public health. Please listen to your school administrators, educators, and public health officials, many of whom are parents, because we are the experts in our field. Start the school year off virtually and take time to really partner with MSD, MSEA, principals and our public health officials so that we can fully open our schools in a manner that shows respect to our faculty and students. As educators, we are obviously going to ensure that students learn in either model. We work with all sorts of challenges and do our best regardless of the situation we're put in. But to burden your staff with twice the work and 100% of the risk is not acceptable and is incredibly short-sighted. There are creative solutions that other counties are working on right now, such as Hartford County's plan to allow high-need students access to technology and supervised space in school to fully engage with their peers in distance learning. We have community agencies here that are begging us to let them help, but instead, our county is sitting at the end of July still debating an issue that has already been decided. We should be throwing all of our energy and time into a cohesive plan, but instead, we're stuck in a sickening state of 2020 limbo that has heightened stress for children, families, and educators. I know that all of you care about public education. Otherwise, you wouldn't have run for office. But when we waste precious time debating over a mask requirement, it shows that we are not even remotely prepared for what is coming our way. I've submitted a list of over 200 questions that should be addressed. As elected officials, it's your responsibility to address these concerns, and if you cannot, schools should not be adopting the hybrid plan. However, if you still choose to ignore expert advice and are hell-bent on reopening schools regardless of the consequences, you need to ensure that every employee has contact information for public health officials to report violations that endanger our students and ourselves. You don't have to like voting for a virtual start to school. This is literally nobody's first choice of how they want this year to go. But it allows the essential work of educating Carol's children to happen in a way that minimizes risk for everyone while maximizing the time and energy of staff to make virtual learning the best it can be. We can adapt to online learning, we cannot adapt to being six feet under. Thank you very much.
No, you, yes, there's a new expert.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Laura Dyerberg.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the Board of Education and any other stakeholders viewing this meeting. My name is Laura Dyerberg. I speak to you tonight as a graduate of Carroll County Public Schools, a former teacher in CCPS, and a current teacher elsewhere, while still proudly retaining my residency in Carroll County. I've come tonight to implore you to begin the first semester of instruction virtually for one reason: the health of staff and students. The health of staff and students must come first in any decisions made by the Board of Education. Several speakers either tonight or on other occasions have described the perceived negative impacts crisis virtual learning has had on children during the pandemic. However, is it not more damaging for a child to watch as a virus ravages through his or her community? To watch his or her beloved family members, teachers, and maybe even their friends die or suffer long-term or even permanent consequences to their health, all because a hasty decision was made to return to schools? How can any of you even consider taking the risk of losing even one teacher or even one child? The issue tonight beyond safety is how to make a small amount of electronic resources suffice for the entire school-aged population. Why has CCPS at every opportunity failed to allocate money for a program through which every student would have already been given their own device for online learning and enrichment, as neighboring counties have done for years already? And I must ask the Board, why has the Board voted down each proposal of allocating money for the purpose of purchasing new technological devices for students as recently as October of 2019? Teachers are teachers because they love teaching. Teachers worked extra hours in the spring to learn best practices and were flexible to parents' needs. To see the lack of care and appreciation for this community's teachers is truly disheartening and disgusting, and it is not the first time I've seen it. Many people in this community take for granted how great Carol's teachers are and how lucky they are to live in a school system with such caring, dedicated teachers. Sure, COVID may not kill all of our teachers, staff members, students, or community, but the death of even one person due to the negligence of Carroll County Public Schools is inexcusable. I beg this question of every Board member: Are you Board members personally willing to sacrifice your child or grandchild to be the one to die? If you vote to reopen in any manner other than virtual, the blood of any students, teachers, staff members, and community members lost will be on your hands. Ask yourselves whether you are able to live with that guilt for the rest of your lives. If not, I implore you to vote for a virtual start to the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Karen Sparks.
Greetings. I come to you as a parent of a Carroll County student of the second grader. What did you want to say? No, say it.
I don't care if people have to go to, I don't care if people have to go to the school with masks. They still have to get educated.
So I'm also a parent of a child with ADD and ADHD, and even in the best times, we don't do enough for our children. Last year, I uprooted my entire family for Baltimore County School System to come to Carroll County for a better experience. Very close to his pediatrician, if you have a child with ADHD on medication, you have to do weight checks every three months, and his pediatrician fully supports the science of children returning to school. The mental health and anguish and the suicides are much more than any child COVID death that we've experienced to date. If you look across other countries, they have successfully gone back to school. Our students should not be left behind. I fortunately represent the haves, that I could send him to a private school, I could send him to a summer camp that's going to help with education. I think there are a lot of have-nots that are going to be left home in this process. And I don't enjoy the saying, "Be safe, stay home," because not every home is safe. And I have read that privileged children may lose about six months of an education in this process, but colored or non-privileged children are looking at 10 months plus if they even recover. So I implore you to vote for virtual. Our kids need that one-on-one instruction with their teachers. They need the mental support, the social support, and the structure of the school day to be successful. So, thank you for your time.
I vote for virtual.
No, he doesn't. Silly. Thank you.
Thank you. Selena. South.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Selena Seles, and I am the third generation of Reels Bus Service. I am a Carroll County school bus driver and also a parent of two children in Carroll County Public Schools. I did not come to say what side I ask you to make the decision on. I just wanted to give one suggestion, if possible, and that would be to please allow parents to make the final decision if their child would attend virtually or if they would attend hybrid. I feel, you know, we did already do the online surveys, and I feel that the feedback that has come from that, I'm sure, has been great. But I think it's probably better that each school would reach out individually to each student and to each parent and have the parent make the final say that they would like their child to go virtually or hybrid, and have all the responsibility to be put on the parent that way. And the county and county, the head of the county and all of you will not be held responsible or liable for making a wrong decision. I can't imagine, I can't imagine the, what you have on your hands and your shoulders with having to make a decision for the entire county. But again, I just ask that maybe you would give that a thought in allowing the parents to have that final word and say, and then if, you know, if that would happen, any parent who chooses to have their child return to school, allow them to sign a waiver and stating that they understand the risks that are involved with that, but also for the children who are staying virtual, who will be continuing virtual learning. It's going to be the parent's responsibility that they teach their child, so if their child falls behind, they can't blame anyone but themselves, because that's what they chose for their child, and in the same regard to a child who does go to school. If the child contracts a sickness, the coronavirus, which is very big right now, it's nothing but the parent's fault because they allotted and wanted their child to attend school, and they agreed and said that that was okay. And I think that's taking all the responsibility off of the county and off of anyone who has to make that tough decision. And I understand that there is a shortage already of teachers and especially bus drivers in the county, and I do feel that delaying a school opening is going to cause a, more of a problem for both teachers and school bus drivers, and especially if we are not paid, I can speak from that standpoint, you know, we would have to seek employment elsewhere. I know that my children are eager to get back into school. They miss school dearly, but also I want them to be able to attend safely. I appreciate your all's time. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Christina Olson.
Hi.
Aye.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. As you know, I'm the founder of Return to Learn and a Carroll County resident. My previous addresses to the Board have been providing information, data, and pleading for opening our schools. You guys have read all the reports, you've read the science, you know why schools need to be reopened. We at Return to Learn have fought hard. Our integrity has been attacked, our parenting has been attacked, our beliefs have been attacked, our children have been attacked, and who we are as people have been attacked. Sadly, most of these attacks have been from the teachers of our communities. I'm here tonight to tell you that I, we, we love teachers. If we didn't believe that teachers were essential to the well-being of so many children, we wouldn't be fighting for them to return to school. This isn't an us versus them, and I'm devastated that it has become so. I'm invested in returning our children to school because I know personally the safe and supportive place a school can be for a child. You see, I am one of the children I'm fighting for. I was a child who lived in an unsafe home. I was a child who couldn't wait to go to school to escape my horrific reality at home. I played every single sport because it allowed me more time away from my home. I personally know what it feels like to have the entire world turn its back on you and give up, because you know what? I gave up on myself, too. I know the impact a single teacher can have on a student, and while feeling the hate directed at me and my family recently makes it difficult, I still believe. I believe that there's those amazing teachers out there. I had the opportunity to reconnect with my ninth-grade English teacher over the past few years. I was able to share with him the impact he made in my life. I was able to share that his kindness and never giving up on me literally saved my life in some of my darkest times. The funny part, he didn't even remember me. He didn't know the impact that he made. He was just doing what so many of our amazing teachers do every single day for our children. So for all the educators questioning my intentions and why I want children in school, I want you to know, we aren't against you. We want you to see yourself through the eyes of the children whose lives you impact in ways you never even know. We want you to value what you provide our children as much as we do. We want you to understand that by not returning to schools, you're turning your back on so many children who've always looked at you as the one person who would never turn their back. I'm asking for teachers to uphold themselves as the heroes you are in the children's eyes. In addition to the children I spoke of, we have special needs children, children's of working family that who don't have internet connectivity, children who don't learn well virtually, students that suffer emotionally and psychologically with the closures. Those children are going to be affected also. I pray that each of you, having to make these very, very difficult decisions, are surrounded with the wisdom, the courage, and the virtue to make the best decision that you can and keep our children safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Kim Stewart.
I stand here today in righteous anger. Righteous anger is anger based on fierce opposition to wrongdoing aimed toward the betterment of human life by righting wrongs. Why do I stand here in righteous anger? Because the CDC, the AAP, well-respected institutions, and numerous countless doctors and experts recommend and support opening schools. And yet, politics, fear, manipulation, and control make it necessary for me to stand here and try to bring reason to a decision-making process around a virus with a 99% recovery rate. Fear has been so craftily peddled that some people's minds have shifted to expecting to prevent every teacher, every child, every human being from ever getting sick ever again. Kids will never go back to school again using that kind of unsound logic. Viruses move through the population. It is impossible to hide from a virus. People making these decisions need to understand that. Kids get and transmit the seasonal flu at a much higher rate than COVID, and we do not close down schools, even in the 2009-2010 pandemic. Your job is to take the facts and create a safe learning environment. If your main factor in decision-making is risk aversion, you wind up with the mindset of, "It can endanger one person," or, "Let's not open schools so no one can blame me," or, "As long as it doesn't happen in my district." That is abdicating responsibility and not taking into consideration the serious, long-term collateral damage from not opening schools. Just one example of that is, are the programs in Carroll County at the Career and Tech Center that are scheduled the spring of junior year and the fall of senior year. The class of 2021 has merely a couple of weeks of hands-on learning, which will translate to not earning an industry certification and ultimately will translate to a less skilled workforce upon graduation. Programs like auto technology, cosmetology, masonry, carpentry, and culinary simply do not thrive in a virtual capacity, and these students have missed out on earning certifications that would lead to sustainable jobs. In-person school is essential for so many other reasons that I'm sure you have considered. It is past time to do a risk-reward analysis with facts. The proposed cure is far worse and far more destructive than the disease. If every business caved into the fear of, "I don't feel safe," we would crumble as a society. I don't have time to add all the quotes and numbers from the CDC Director and other infectious disease specialists who say we can and should open schools in the fall. Please do not succumb to political pressure that is based on unsupported fear with an intent to control. The curve has been flattened, the fear has not.
Thank you.
I will say leaving that teachers have a union, the parents out here should be heard. Thank you.
Do you like to leave the rest of your? And now we have Gary and Megan Brawning.
Good evening, school board members. I'm addressing you this evening to show my full support for reopening Carroll County Public Schools in person this fall. While I realize that our options are currently limited to the hybrid model due to Maryland remaining in Stage 2, I feel that it will be easiest to transition from the hybrid model to full reopening five days a week when Maryland moves to Phase 3. As far as I am concerned, education is an essential service for our students, parents, and the community. In general, what my family experienced this spring while using Google Classrooms cannot be described as learning. Personally, I would best describe it as cruel and unusual punishment of my two daughters and I. Elementary-aged children especially need to have in-person contact with a teacher in order to effectively learn. I worry about the damage we are doing to our children by isolating them socially at this time. The County Teachers Union argues that it is not safe to return in person this fall. I do not believe that one bit. The science does not support it. Teachers that are unwilling to return to schools in person should be given the opportunity to teach online classes for high-risk families or think about finding alternative work. I do not believe this Board should bow down to the union on this issue. We owe it to our students and families to have the gumption to make every possible effort to return to full in-person learning as soon as possible. Anything less is unacceptable. Thank you. And Megan, the only student, has a quick speech.
Good evening, school board members. I'm Megan Brawning, and I go to Mechanicsville Elementary School. I think kids should choose if they would be allowed to go to school in person or online. Some kids don't know how to use the computer correctly, like me. My mom and dad work full-time, and they don't have time to teach me. I play the flute, and my band teacher cannot teach me online. Even though I would have to wear a mask, I would love to go back to school. Some things that you can do in school, you cannot do online, like talking to the class without the computer glitching. Some of the apps that work in school do not work online, and some of the electronics that work for school, and some of them don't. How many of you know how to draw on a PDF? I believe that kids should be able to choose if they would like to go to school in person or online, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Kimberly. Mallison, did I say that correctly?
Mallison, like Allison with an M.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. Ready for me? All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Kim Mallison, previously McNew, for the board members who know me by that. Not only am I a proud graduate of North Carroll High School, but I've been teaching in Carroll County for 11 years. Shout out to Herb, yes, she was my teacher. I love how, I love teaching in this county. I love how my voice is heard and how I feel valued. I love just being a part of my community that I grew up in, but right now, I'm but right now, I'm not feeling valued, nor do I feel like my voice is being heard. I have a lot of pride in my classroom atmosphere. My classroom is not a quiet place. My students do not spend a lot of time in their assigned seats. They know our class is a safe place to be honest, laugh, and feel loved. My students are usually walking around, collaborating with one another, and learning from one another. Mrs. Pataglia and Dr. Lockard have both witnessed my classroom firsthand. My students love working together and have pride in themselves while problem-solving and sharing their ideas. I ha- I help plan assemblies and pep rallies to build the sense of community within our school. We have guest speakers share their professions. We go to outdoor school and spend an amazing week having hands-on experiences. However, the hybrid model will not allow students to do this. They will be forced to stand six feet away from their friends. No group work, no sitting on the carpet reading with a partner, no getting a drink from the water fountain, no playing cards in homeroom, no sharing a pencil from their friend whenever they run out of lead, no playing sports in gym class, no science experiments, no field trips, no going to the media center to check out a book, no assemblies, no pep rallies, nothing that allows them to get close to another person, all while wearing masks. This will not be the school students nor parents remember. This will be a sad, lonely building with fragments of what it once was. Also, I am not afraid for myself. I am afraid for the staff member undergoing chemo treatments but must continue to work for their school-provided health insurance. I'm afraid for the staff member who has an autoimmune disorder. I'm afraid for the staff member who has asthma. I'm afraid for the staff member who is over 50. I'm afraid for the staff member who comes into contact with students who are sick, but their parents just give them Tylenol and send them to school. It happens every day. I'm afraid for the staff members who take care of their elderly parents at home. I'm afraid for the pregnant teacher and the teacher who just gave birth. I'm afraid for the staff member who constantly has to ask their students to keep their mask on when they don't really even keep their shoes on in my class. I'm nervous for the staff member who will be in class with students who are excused from wearing masks because they have a doctor's note. Again, I'm not scared for me. I'm scared for the people who love, who I love teaching with and who would be devastated if anything ever happened to them. All it takes is for one person to infect an entire school. If you care about people, think about the bigger picture. If you are, you may not be impacted by this, but others will be. If you vote to send us back, please sign us, sign up to substitute. However, Mr. Kyler feels, and I quote, "substitute teaching would be a step down for either of us." I hope the rest of you, don't, I hope the rest of you don't feel the same way because we are going to need subs.
Please tell the truth. You did such a good job. She did. I was almost like impressed. Till she, till she, till she lied.
Hello. My name is Sean Kelly, and I teach eighth grade social studies at East Middle School. I'm here today to ask you to vote to start, to start the school year virtually. We are currently in the middle of a global pandemic, and it would not be wise or safe to have students and teachers return to school buildings when the coronavirus is spreading throughout our state and our county. Being sent back into a work environment that has poor ventilation and lacks, lacks the means to properly clean and disinfect the building is not good for the physical and mental health of your students, teachers, and school staff. There is no perfect choice, but there is a safe choice. That is to start the school year virtually. In March, teachers were asked to teach virtually, and they rose to the occasion. It wasn't perfect, but it worked. If we were to start the school year virtually, it would be 10 times better because of what we learned during the last three months of the school year. Teachers are strong, empathetic individuals who will do anything for their students. That does not disappear with virtual learning. If anything, it will be stronger because we know that it is, it is new and different, and we are going through it with our students. It was noted in the reopening and recovery plan that cleaning and disinfecting must occur routinely within the instructional program, and CCPS has limited human resources and operations to support routine thorough disinfecting throughout the instructional day. If we cannot meet this expectation, why would we consider reopening using the hybrid plan? The likelihood of students, teachers, and school staff getting sick from the airborne virus is high under the hybrid plan. If it is not safe to sit in a movie theater for two hours, why should we be asked to go into the school building for eight? Additionally, Governor Hogan has repeatedly encouraged telework. Why should schools be an exemption to this recommendation? If you choose to vote to start the school year with the hybrid plan, I hope you're prepared to answer the following questions. What would you say to the parents of a fifth-grade student who died of COVID-19? What would you say to the children of an English teacher who died of COVID-19? What would you say to the spouse of an instructional assistant who died of COVID-19? If you do not know how to answer these questions or if they make you uncomfortable, you should reconsider your vote. Please do not let political leaders, outside groups, and vocal community, community members who are not looking out for the health and safety of the entire CCPS community sway your vote. Again, please vote to start the school year virtually. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Next, we have Cecilia, is it Celia Croft?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Celia Croft, and I'm a music teacher at Runnymede Elementary, and I am extremely proud to work for this school system. I adore my students, and I think about them every day. I think about my student who always wants to be at the end of the line because he doesn't want to leave my room. I think about the student who runs down the hallway to give me a hug, and I think about the student who sends me videos of her practicing violin because she knows that I would be proud of her. My question is, are their lives worth risking to you? The Carroll County Health Department just released data showing the most new cases in a single report since late March. Fifty-nine cases in three days, and the numbers are still rising. Twenty of them are children between the ages of 10 and 19. This is not a hypothetical. These are our students. Teachers from other districts seek us out because they know they will be supported here, and our reputation is one of consistent care. You risk ruining that reputation with any decision that does not value safety first and foremost. Because an educator who feels unsafe, uncared-for, and devalued cannot give their full service to their work. The next month, we can prepare for rigorous and consistent online learning, but can you prepare for the consequences of putting thousands of staff members and students and their families at risk? Can you prepare for what the loss of even one child will do to our school community, knowing that you could have prevented it? Because in my eyes, the only acceptable number of student deaths is zero. We need to join with the majority of the state in their decision to protect staff and students first. Otherwise, we will be the first county to demonstrate that we do not value our lives. We will be the first county to ignore science, ignore data, ignore the MSEA, ignore the rising numbers of new cases, ignore the risks to our children, and ignore what is still unknown about the long-term effects of the disease and choose what is convenient over what is safe. Is that the precedent that we want Carroll County to set in a time of crisis? This does not come down to teachers versus parents. There is not a single teacher who wants to work against families when it comes to their child's education. I want families to know that we hear them, and we see them, and we will support them. We will continue to be active partners in their children's success through online learning. I am asking you, please, to show your faith and trust in educators to meet this challenge without risking our lives to do so. I am asking you to choose care over convenience. A perfect solution does not exist, but a safe one does. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Beth Oats.
Hello. I brought a prop. My name is Beth Oats, and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Ponty Ridge Elementary School. I adore my job and my students. I've been teaching for 20 years, and I feel like I'm the type of teacher who goes above and beyond. Last spring, when it was time to start learning virtual learning, I had a lot of technology to learn. I learned about 10 years' worth in about a week. I cried a lot. My, my children helped me, my peers helped me, but I figured it out. During the virtual learning, I feel like I went above and beyond, and I can do that again this fall. I had, I had live class meetings with my kindergarteners twice a week. I learned how to videotape lessons and send them. I videotaped personal messages to my students. I also had one-on-one lessons online every day with two to three kids a day. And my lessons were always about 45 minutes long because they wanted to talk to me. And I always let them talk first, we'd do a lesson, and then we'd talk some more. So, and I was happy to do that. I also gave up my cell phone number. One of my students wasn't on Google Classroom, so we FaceTimed, and I talked him over my phone. I also delivered meals to families in need, and I also dropped off reading books and extra workbooks to doorsteps of the children that I knew did not have that. So I feel like I'm a very loyal teacher. I want to show you just a scenario of what's going to happen if we go back hybrid. So here I am with my 11 students. So far, I have 22 children on my roster, and that's, and we haven't even gotten to August yet. Here I am, and here's our classroom. We're all spread out. Well, Johnny has a cough one day, and he goes to the, to the nurse, and he has a fever. Well, all the people around Johnny, including me, because I probably will be near him, will have to go home and quarantine until we find out what Johnny's diagnosis is. He probably will have to take a COVID test. All right? So then we go back in few, you know, a few days, maybe three, four, or five days. And then, the next day, as children do, another kid's going to be sick. Kindergarteners are sick all the time. I get sprayed all the time. Their fingers are up their nose all the time. It's rubbed on the tables. That's just as kindergarten. I can accept that part. But the next day, Suzie has a sore throat and a fever. Again, these people who sit near Suzie are going to have to go home and quarantine till we find out Suzie, what Suzie has. Hopefully, she only has strep throat. And that's going to happen over and over and over. The instruction is going to be very splintered and irregular, and as we know, young children need continuity. So I also want to tell you real quickly about what kindergarten is going to look like this year. It's not going to be what it normally is. We already, they've already taken our rugs away. Children are not going to sit on the rug to listen to stories or to see the teachers. They're going to be spread out amongst the tables, and there is some talk that they're going to replace our tables with desks sitting in rows as far apart as they can. Yes, yes. There will be no shared books on the shelves, no shared guiding reading books. Manipulas will have to be bagged, and they'll have to sit in that seat all day, including lunch and special areas. If they get to go outside for recess, they're not going to be able to touch the monkey bars or any balls or, or anything. So I just wanted to show you what kindergarten will really be like, and that's not what I want to introduce my students to. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Beth Kavanaugh?
Hi. Thank you for letting me talk this evening. My name is Beth Kavanaugh, and I am a parent in Carroll County. But I also came to speak. I've never spoken anything like this before because not only am I a parent, I have two graduates from South Carroll High School, but I have two high schoolers there now. I'm a nurse, and I'm also an educator. I'm adjunct faculty at Johns Hopkins School of Nursing. So I too am a teacher, and I did have to go back into hospitals this summer because I teach clinical for nursing students. And we had a lot of faculty that were also very scared to go back into a hospital setting. Some of them were older than me. I'm in my 50s, and it was a scary prospect. But we knew that if we don't do this, we're not going to have any nurses in the future to be taking care of people. So we put some precautions in place that would make it safe and would allow us to teach smaller groups, rotating in and out of the hospital, things like that that would put the instructors at ease and also put the students at ease. But we didn't abandon the idea completely. I think that my frustration that I've heard, because I see both sides as being a faculty member and being a parent, is that I feel that many teachers have shut down and just said it's unsafe. And I agree, it is unsafe. You cannot go back with the full number of students and expect things to go on as normal. But no one has said, including the Teachers Union, what, what would you need to make it safe? What do we need to invest money in? I think with these younger students, I understand kindergarten. They're all over each other. They're this. Maybe we need to spend money on more kindergarten teachers and make smaller classes and make, and have more TAs. We used to have more TAs in Carroll County. When my children were in kindergarten, they had a 14-person class. That's a much smaller class to begin with. If you had to hi, if you had to have a hybrid with that, you're talking seven children, and they had a full-time TA with a teacher. So let's talk about how we can make it happen. Even if we have to start with virtual, how are we going to go into hybrid? How are we going to make it safe for everybody? Not, we're not doing it. It's not safe. It's not right. I'm also a pediatric nurse. I've worked in the pediatric ER. Mental health in the past 20 years has exploded in a young population. I just talked to two pediatric ER nurses out there that are current staff nurses, and they had a seven-year-old this week, and they had, have also seen an increase in non-accidental traumas. And this is the stress of parents dealing with things that they've never had to cope with. And for many children, I just spoke with a school counselor outside. This is, their touching base is school. So at least a hybrid model of them coming once or twice a week would keep them in touch with resources and people that they need in their lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Christina Eads, and I come before you first as a mom. My three-year-old autistic son will be starting school this year in Carroll County, and I also stand before you as a special education teacher in one of the specialized education programs here in Carroll County. The children I teach have very specific needs. Students in the program cannot tolerate, nor are they going to be required to wear face masks while in the school building. Students require individual student support assistants who physically assist them with learning, feeding, toileting, and, and general hygiene. Students require consistent crisis management, which also may involve physical assistance. And students require not only a main teacher, but multiple teachers, teaching assistants, individual support assistants, and a variety of related service providers. Frankly, after examining these special needs and realizing that because social distancing is not at all possible in a specialized education program, it is clear that it's unfeasible to provide proper protection for students and staff members. The consequences are going to be devastating. During a typical school year, PPE is hard to keep stocked for specialized programs due to the constant needs. With the situations that the students and staff will be exposed to, it'll be asking teachers, staff, and other students to come in contact with bodily fluids daily without the possibility to even follow guidelines set by the CDC to keep the virus from spreading. Just last year, during cold and flu season, the program had over half of our students and a high number of staff out at one time. If anyone in this program is infected with COVID-19, the entire program, including specialists, and the many schools they traveled to, are going to be in danger. Not to mention the general education students who are based out of the same location as these specialized programs. These are some of many reasons that I believe that virtual learning is a necessity at this time. In specialized programs, consistency and structure are vital to learning and behavioral outcomes. Even the hybrid model suggested hurts that structure by having students come in on some days and stay home on others and will drastically affect the amount of learning that will happen during their in-school and home-based learning. As a teacher in this county, I am passionate about proper education and meeting the needs of our students and their families. But none of those outweigh the desire to keep all of our students, our staff, and their families safe from this possibly deadly virus. Through this pandemic, social media and politics have pitted teachers against, teachers against parents, and parents against teachers. But that's not the reality of my heart. We are one team to care for and educate these amazing students in the safest manner. We are one team to care for and educate these amazing students in the safest manner possible. So I am pleading with you. Please keep our students and their families, our staff and their families, and personally my family safe by continuing with the virtual learning model. A perfect solution does not exist, but a safe one does. Thank you.
Tony Roman?
Let me first apologize because it's going to be probably the first time I've ever spoken before this body and I will be reading something because it's important enough for me to make sure I don't get it wrong. Uh, my name's Tony Roman, I'm entering 35 years of teaching Carroll County. This is a vocation for me, not just a career, and for many of my fellow CCA members. I'm now leaving script because I could not speak to you tonight if it had not been for fellow CCA member Amy Levin, who gave her, her spot in line so I could speak to you today. Amy wanted to make sure that you understood that community transmission is increasing in this county. I'm happy to know that Ed Singer is going to be with you. Our numbers are not going in the right direction. She is afraid that using three feet from the American Pediatricity Academy is not going to be guideline. That can be helpful. It needs to be the CDC six-foot circle for it to be working in the classroom. Go back to my script. I watched the state school board meeting yesterday. In the second session, Dr. Salmon had the superintendents of Calvert County and Cecil County present their summer recovery programs as a great example of what's working. They both brought in their elementary students. They had middle and high on virtual. At the end of each of their speeches, they said this is a great learning experience, but we also learned we cannot do this full system. We have to go virtual to start with because there's no way we can reproduce what we did this summer, even at 50%. So I am now also speaking for some of my fellow students, uh, teachers who are out there, who don't live in Carroll County but teach in Carroll County, whose children go to schools in Pennsylvania where they're not wearing masks, where other rules are being applied, where they could be worried that Pennsylvania may say you cannot cross the border into Maryland. And then what do they do if they're supposed to be coming here to teach? Or afraid that they may can bring something because their children don't have to wear masks in their school. So I ask you to listen and to question and ask Mr. Singer about what are the conditions? Tonight, if you haven't heard, Frederick County went virtual. We are the only people, we're the only system in central Maryland right now that's not going virtual. I think they made the 15 state or 15 county to go virtual. No one else is doing anything else than that. We can't stand alone. Obviously, something has to be correct in that part of everyone else is doing it. And we should recognize that also. So I'll leave you with just this thought that has been our idea that nothing can be perfect, but we can also do the right thing. Thank you very much.
We have Alexis Mueller?
All right. Good evening. My name is Alexis Mueller. I'm a teacher at Northwest Middle School and most importantly, I'm a parent of two children who attend Friendship Valley Elementary. Our numbers over the last week have been on the rise. Just as we are sitting here tossing back and forth the decision for this upcoming fall, the numbers continue to rise. For that reason, we need to be cautious and mindful of the steps we take next. I have a few questions for you. With the hybrid method, are we setting our parents, students, and educational staff up to be successful? Do we have plans put in place for families that want to go only virtual? Who's teaching them? How many families are there? Do we have adequate cleaning supplies for the classrooms? And I'm not talking the baby wipes that are supposed to clean elementary rooms. That in itself is a joke. Have you decided how many positive cases it will take before school building shuts down? Have you hired the extra custodians to help clean the classrooms? Have you figured out the extra planning time I will get at school to work with the students that are virtual that day? Have you hired more substitutes for when teachers get sick? Because that issue's not going away. Are teachers expected to substitute for other classes when the job is unfilled? That leads to cross-contamination, correct? Will I be penalized for being late to work if I choose to drive my two children to school so that their seat can be filled by a fellow neighbor whose parents can't drive them? As I'm trying to be flexible for the county? Are elementary children going to be stuck in one classroom all day? Have you gotten back all the laptops loaned out this past spring? Have you bought more laptops to cover the loaned ones that are going to go to only virtual so we have enough in the classrooms? Lastly, have you planned for the unintended consequences of staff retiring in August if we go hybrid at such a late stage? How is hiring loads of new teachers at this point in the summer going to lead to successful classroom experience for our students? If you're struggling to mentally answer these questions, then your best decision with the information you have is to vote virtual. Please do not for a minute take my questions as a pause for not wanting to be in my classroom seeing my students. That I would rather have, oh, my obese body sitting on the couch, as stated by Commissioner Buttichet, Boucher, because I'm prone to getting COVID while I sip my Hans coffee as I lazily teach my 80-some students via virtual. That is far from the reality. I want my children taught by their hard-working, extremely flexible and outstanding teachers in person at Friendship Valley. Because that is the ideal situation. However, I do not want to be put into a work environment, nor do I want my children to be put into an environment that has not been adequately prepped for because of our inability to make a tough decision in a timely manner. Give teachers the respect they have earned and believe us when we say a perfect solution does not exist. A safe one does. Please vote virtual. Also, at this point, earlier Governor Hogan made the decision that everybody should wear masks and that we should be teleworking if possible. So thank you for your time.
What, what grade are you?
Seven.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Uh, my name is Eric Rayward and I am the parent of three children in the Carroll County school system. I have two neurotypical children and I have one child that has special needs. He has autism. Uh, he is currently attending Winfield Elementary and he's going to be going into first grade. And he, he was doing great. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank his special educator, Ms. Tina Baker, for her dedication to Aiden and all of her students during the pandemic. Her efforts to bring special education into the home have been outstanding and very much appreciated. But, um, we've learned a lot in the last three months with special education and the ability to deal with the needs and support, uh, that my son requires with his autistic, um, uh, needs. Uh, so I want to talk to you today a little bit about, um, what Aiden's missing. This is, this is not a hit on the teachers. They're doing the absolute best that they can with what they have. And I, I have so much gratitude towards them. So I only have a minute 53 left, so I'll get going. Um, so first I want to talk about behavior plan support. So it is essentially non-existent. BCBA's provide oversight to his behavior plan through assessment of his behavior to facilitate education in the school environment. They provide this input to the educator and the IAs, but the us as parents do not receive this feedback. I cannot take this on board and implement this in my home because I don't have a BCBA looking at his behavior plan. Um, and that is one major issue with autistic children is their behavior. Um, so I can't, I can't provide the adjustments, the plan guidance and training to the instructional assistants. Parents should not receive this at home. So I have the inability to regulate his behavioral needs and it impacts all aspects of his virtual education. So if I don't have the skills to help my child, I can't help him. And I need that specialty to help him. Uh, the next specialty is the sensory plan support. It is essentially non-existent and provided by occupational therapists. Aiden has provided consulting support for occupational therapy services on weekly basis. The OT therapist provides oversight to his individual sensory plan through assessment of his behavior and environment to facilitate sensory-based strategies, track effectiveness, and adjust his plan to facilitate education in the school environment. They then provide adjustments to that plan. They don't give that to me. I, I've never had to do that before. I don't know how I'm going to implement that at home virtually for him. Next one is his speech plan support. So that has been actually, uh, pretty good. So, but it is limited. So Aiden has provided speech therapy services three times a week. That speech therapist is able to provide limited expressive, receptive, and articulation services. The inability to work with him in a social environment with his peers limits his ability to develop expressive and receptive skills in his education. The inability to provide physical tact inhibits his education. The inability to facilitate his expressive and receptive speech and articulation inhibits his education. Okay. So Carroll County Board of Education, I request your consideration in bringing our most fragile learners back to school first. Please make it a priority to facilitate the supports and services required to continue special education. I do not have the means or resources to bring the highly-trained specialized professionals on your staffs and instructors into my home to train myself or my wife to facilitate virtual special education of our autistic child. Please do not let my son slip through the cracks or anybody else's. Do not allow him to fall further behind. He will be a productive member of society, he just needs more support than others. If you can bring somebody back, please bring our special education needs children back first.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes the citizen participation. We'll move, we'll move on to employee groups.
Can't see it, but I'm smiling. Good evening. I am Teresa Basler McCullough, President of the Carroll County Education Association, representing teachers, RNs, counselors, speech and language providers, OTs, and PTs who are anxiously waiting for a reopening plan. I'd like to thank the participants in today's car rally. We stopped, we stopped counting at 120-plus cars and that number speaks volumes. The health and safety of every person within a brick and mortar building must be the top priority. Start the school year virtually and get it right. A perfect solution does not exist. A safe one does. Governor Hogan just stated, "We cannot afford to let our guard down." I don't envy your position. None of us signed up for this. But I have faith that you'll make the decision that is safe. If we open our schools too quickly and without adequate safety precautions, the result will be that some will contract the virus. Some will recover. Some will face debilitating health consequences and some will die. These are facts. And they are consequences that we refuse to accept. Thank you.
I'm wearing our new CASE mask. We're ready. Just to let you know with our logo that we make a difference. Good evening, Dr. Lockard and board members. Commissioner Frazier, if you're out there in virtual land. Uh, my name is Diane Deal and I am the president of CASE, representing our secretary clerical staff, LPNs, and instructional assistants. I'm not here to tell you what to do or what not to do. I will tell you that CASE will do whatever it takes for our students to get the education they deserve during this pandemic. At the last board meeting, it was mentioned that education support professionals may have to do recess. We already do. It was mentioned that we would do lunches. We already do and have done it before in classrooms. We are the unsung heroes of the students of Carroll County Public Schools. We are the group that does not get accolades or awards, nor do we expect any. We genuinely care about the education of each and every student in our school system. While we understand many things had to be decided quickly for virtual learning in the spring, almost every ESP will tell you they were constantly looking for ways to be more involved with our students. We are hoping that improvements have been made so you can utilize one of your biggest assets in the school system, your ESPs. Your ESPs maintain a wealth of talent and expertise. I'm just going to give you a few examples of those. Some are teacher certified. We have bachelor's degrees. We have AA degrees. We are paraprofessional certification, certified. We have registered behavior technicians. These are just a few of the degrees and certifications that many of our ESPs have. Whatever decision is made for the reopening of schools, the only way it is even going to have a chance of being successful is including and utilizing the ESPs in all aspects of their learning. If you want to give CCPS students the best possible education, you will utilize us. While we have always and will defend our negotiated agreement and contractual rights, we are ready to do what is needed for our students. This has always been our mission as educators and will not change now. There are some tough decisions to be made and CASE does not envy you at all as a board in making them. We want you to know we will support those decisions in the best way possible. I also look forward to meeting with Mr. O'Neill via virtual about our input. I thank you for your time and your continued collaboration as we move forward. And yes, we make a difference. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Diane.
Thanks. Mrs. Savig, uh, President Savigny, board members, I'm being told by Ms. Gaddis, we do, we do need to do a reboot of the system. Is that correct, Bob? I think that's been part of our issue from the very beginning tonight. And so, Mr. Henderson, how long do you anticipate that taking? I want to make sure our listening audience is, is aware of that, our viewing audience. Bob? How long would that reboot take so we can tell folks who are listening at home or watching at home? Five minutes, okay. So we're going to, now, Mr. Henderson, are we to log off of Teams?
I'm going to end the meeting.
Okay.
And then, um, we'll start it back up and everybody might join back in.
All right. So the live stream will start again at 7:05, correct? Board members, are you comfortable with that? Because I, I want to make sure everybody gets to see and hear everything we're talking about tonight.
Absolutely. Just for the, the folks who are not in the boardroom here and are joining us virtually, they need to exit the application and come back in. Correct? Okay, into the meeting invitation that is already on the calendars.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. We will take a five, uh, hopefully a five-minute recess and see you shortly.
And, and we don't do anything.
I just hung up, but I'm going to enter back. That's what he, I thought that's what he.